Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President.
Please stand for the pledge and remarks by Councilman Bagley.
(inaudible) Today I would just like to make brief remarks on, in honor of an OPBD Vice President that just passed away, named Mart Sedke, and as a Union Vice President, we were on other sides of the table of each other over the years, but she always was a dignified, respectful woman, and she died a cancer in August, and her wish was at OPBD to have a month of giving, which is November, and she was a huge proponent of the United Way of the Midlands, so a couple of things I would ask in Mart's honor, number one is to be respectful of everyone, and to make this a month of true giving, even if it's a small thing, just keep that in mind going forward, thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council, we look forward to hearing your testimony today on our various items, I encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate.
Motion by Councilmember Harding to reconsider item six, the resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Shimmer Associates, Inc., in the amount of $60,000 for the residential snowplow inspectors 2021-2022 winter season.
Is there a motion to reconsider?
Yeah, motion to reconsider.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, now requires a vote to be reconsidered, correct? Before we take the vote, however, I have a light on, Councilmember Palermo, you're recognized. Or does it need to be reconsidered first? Reconsidered first, so we'll take that vote first, roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Rowe.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Now, Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. President. We have this professional service agreement in front of us for the third week, if you've been paying attention, some have, and that's why we have it here to reconsider, but some haven't, so I'm gonna give it one more try, we'll say the third time's a charm here. Certainly with Public Works, you might say that, boy, you know, Vinnie sure is hard on Public Works, and that's just not the truth, the truth is, Public Works is very important. Well, I'll wait, either's sidebar going on here.
Mr. Stube. Director Stube, I don't mean to be rude, but we do have a forum happening here, and a council member talking, so we need to be respectful of that off the mic, thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Okay, so as I was saying about Public Works, they're very important to our city, whether you live in our city, or travel through our city, or work in our city, if you have to do anything within Omaha, I'm pretty certain that Public Works affects your livelihood and the way you go about it. And to be honest, if I was the mayor, I probably would have most, not all, but most of the staff members in place, they're hardworking people, but sometimes we have to step back and look at some of these professional service agreements, and if they're necessary, and in this particular one, unfortunately, we're to the point where we haven't fulfilled our obligation to hire the proper amount of city employees, so now we've found ourselves to be sourcing out this work, and it comes through contractors. But unfortunately, somewhere along the way, even though when we contract this bid out, somebody has deemed it that, well, even though the bid has been contracted out, and we expect this contractor, these contractors, to do their job, somebody feels that they're not gonna do their job, so then we take it to the next step, and then we hire another contractor to watch the contractor that we've already hired to do the job. Do you see where I'm going, do you see how, when I talk about Public Works and how important it is, but things we could cut out to actually make it better for the citizens of Omaha? Now, we heard in pre-council, at least from the Law Department, that there wasn't any ramifications legally, if this didn't pass, because it's a professional service agreement, and the snowplow contractors have already been approved for the residential areas, and you might also ask yourself, well, it's only $300,000, well, it is only $300,000, this week, last week, maybe next week, maybe next month, but this is all money that we could use to actually put into employment for the city, to get these city spots filled, to stop subbing all this work out. Do you understand what I'm saying, we're subbing work out that we don't believe the bidder's gonna do the job, so we have ourselves a professional service agreement to watch the bidder? I do have a question for Director Stube, if I could.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Stube, so, and I'll have probably a couple, but let me start with this one, so, we have an agreement that we've had for many years, where a contractor's watching a contractor, but let me ask you, who watches the city employee out there plowing the roads?
So, in that particular case, obviously, the city employee is working on major streets during a snowfall event, and so they are reporting back to a supervisor, which typically could be a foreman one, or a foreman three, or somebody else, and so they indicate to that person that's in the office that their route has been completed, and that information, then, is uploaded into the system indicating that that particular route is completed.
Okay, thank you, so, the city worker is supervised ultimately by a city foreman?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I printed off, because a few weeks back, I had mentioned that we already had city workers who were being paid by us, by the city, to actually do this job without needing this professional service agreement, and I wanted to be clear, and I want it on the record, I just didn't want it to come from me, so I know somebody's here from HR with the papers that I had printed out.
Good afternoon, David Grauman, City HR.
Yeah, thank you for being here, do you have them, could you put them up on the overhead for me?
Try to lift this up. First one is city maintenance foreman two.
Okay, and there's a highlighted part in there, if you could read that for me, please, sir.
Inspects work performed by utility companies and private contractors to ensure compliance with city specifications.
So that's a city foreman two, in the street maintenance department, and under the job descriptions, it says inspects work performed by utility companies and private contractors to ensure compliance, oh, whatever words I can't see there, for city specifications, with, okay.
Sorry.
So, I don't think it would be fair, on top there, you can scope out a little bit, there you go. I don't think it'd be fair to ask you if you feel this actually applies to what I'm saying, where we have city employees who are paid to actually watch the contractors, but I'll ask you anyway, do you think this applies?
Could it apply, yes, I'm not familiar with the other duties performed by these positions, so I'd have to look into that more and see what they do on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, and that's fair, and I know they're very busy, how about the next one I gave you?
Next one is city maintenance foreman three.
If you could read that highlighted part, please.
Oversees snow removal operations in an assigned area of the city, which includes contract oversight.
So I don't have to repeat that one, that pretty much nails it, on what we're already paying city employees to do, but instead, somebody along the way has decided not only to contract out the work, but to throw another little entity in the middle, and no offense to whoever the contractors are, and I didn't look at all the names, to be honest, I just looked at what they were doing and knew it was absolutely ridiculous, so, and I knew that we had city workers that clearly are defined in their job description to be able to do this, so, if I'm sitting here and I'm like, hey, let's save $300,000, I'm not off-base by saying this, thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, you also heard in pre-council, where a couple weeks back, the other four contractors were approved, and there was a discussion on, well, if we don't approve this one, then certain districts are gonna be without, how are they gonna be without? We have a bid with snow contractors in residential areas, that's already approved, they're already going to be there, albeit in a pickup truck with a blade that's probably not strong enough to push the snow plow to plow, and that certainly won't go back when a car is moved, and certainly won't go to the end of a dead end, and every other thing that they will shortcut to get the job done, to continue to make their $100 bucks an hour plus. So, when we hear that the job won't be done, what job? The job of somebody in a pickup truck determining that when the snow falls, and when it gets two inches, the contractors are called out to go to the residential area, and then the inspector has to go back, I mean, who knows what the rate of snow is falling, that if it's snowing, and there's two inches of snow on the ground, and it's snowing heavy, that you could even tell the contractor went through? What's the inspector looking for, is he gonna be able to tell where the snow's been plowed, especially a residential street with a lot of traffic? Do they call back and say, hey, you missed this street? Because what we also heard, and I'll get verification on this if I could, Director Stube?
Bob Stube, Public Works.
I had asked a question if, do we know over the past course of so many years, that the snowplow contractors for residential areas ever were dinged, did they ever not fully get paid for the services they provided?
Yeah, I don't have that information, you had asked this morning, and we don't have that information.
Yeah, it'd be tough, but if I'm willing to bet, the answer's no, they've always been paid in full, and I know, because we got much bigger city services that sometimes don't perform, and they should be dinged, and they're not, so I, trust me, they got paid in full. So, what we're saying is, depending on when the inspector goes out, depending on what the job is, and what they see at the certain time, ultimately, the final help comes from the city of Omaha, but it's difficult, you know why? Because we're so many people short in the city of Omaha to actually perform this work, that's why we contract out the residential snowplows, but even those who are focused on the mains and the secondaries, they can't keep up either, because there's too many trucks sitting there empty, and there's too many spots open, so when you say it's only $300,000, well, that's three foreman ones a year that could go out and inspect in the summer, or in the winter, that we could certainly use, this isn't a let's hire, we can't just hire them only for snow, no, you're exactly right, we need to hire them full-time, or, let's take that money and try to figure out how to put it into the employees that actually need it, because, Director Stube, would it be a fair statement if I said, Public Works in the street maintenance department for snow operation is short somewhere between 40 to 60 employees right now?
Yeah, current, again, Bob Stube, Public Works, so, we do have a shortage with AEO1s, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 50, I don't know what the exact number is, as of today.
And in all fairness, I will tell you that every department we have, it's really tough to be at 100%, but to be that many short, and I promise you, we've been that many short since I've been on the council, it's a problem, and that's why we're here, but the problem isn't solved from hiring a contractor, to maybe watch another contractor that's supposed to do the job, if the snowplow contractors aren't doing their job, then we need to find different contractors. You also heard me say that over the last three years, we had 8,000-plus snow issue complaints, and I know depending on how you look at that, you could certainly, let's just say we cut it in half, let's just say we took 4,000 complaints like they didn't happen to the mayor's hotline right off, now you're left with 4,000, let's take, let's cut that in half, let's take another 2,000 off, so now you've got 2,000 snow issue complaints that I can pretty much sum up, that probably came from residential, I know, because I get the complaints for residential snow removal, I don't get a complaint for every other thing, I take that back, I get complaints for a lot of stuff in the winter, but the majority of the complaints I get are residential areas that people cannot get out of, that are iced over, that have freeze and thaws happened, the contractor wasn't able to put their blade down far enough, and there's still inches of snow on the ground, it wasn't curb-to-curb, so, let's just say 2,000 complaints we get a year, from the contractor, who we want to pay money to watch the contractor, does that make sense in any world, in any business that you would run? And I took the 8,000 complaints and knocked it down 6,000, and I think that's pretty fair to say that probably a couple thousand are from residential streets, so, I don't want my colleagues to be put in a spot where they vote with me on this, but everybody remember why you're here, and it's make the city a better place, and if we're not gonna focus on hiring these employees that we need, because again, the people who are gonna save everybody in their residential areas, they're the city workers that are gonna save you, the contractor's not coming back, we're not gonna ding them, they're gonna get paid in full, they're gonna be sitting at home watching football, and the city employee is gonna come out with the city truck, and they're gonna get that road so you can actually get to church, to your place of work, to school, because keep in mind, very few of these places are on main drags, and I live on a main drag, and sometimes I question when the all-call goes out, that the snow's been taken care of, when I see a lane that's still impassable, so, if you vote for this, I mean, it's great, that means when your constituents call you, and they tell you that, hey, I got a residential problem, I hope you take note of it, because you're gonna have to answer to them of why we spent this money, because we shouldn't have these couple thousand complaints, there's other lights on, if you know, I could go on and on and on, and I do have some more questions, but we know how the vote's gonna be, right? It's unfortunate, if you've been paying attention, there's seven of us here, it only needs four to pass, but that's where we're at, so, again, if you feel comfortable that your residential snow removal service is good, then go ahead and hire the inspector for $100 bucks an hour, and you can live with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, and is Mr. Fitzer here?
Todd Fitzer, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzer, earlier today, I had asked for kind of the average amount that we do spend, because we have these contracts, say, up to $60,000, and so, what I wanted to know is, what is our, what's the average amount we spend total for the inspectors per year over the, over the last couple of years, were you able to get that?
We were able to go back five years, what we came up with was, the lowest we've spent in the last five years was $60,000, the average over the last five years, per year, is $160,000 per year for the last five years.
And is that total for all the, all of the inspector company, all the contracts?
Correct.
Okay, so, instead of saying $300,000, our average is 161.
That is correct, for the last five years.
Okay, and if memory serves me correct, last week, you stated that there's approximately 32 inspectors that are going out, because you have them broken down into three shifts, how many inspectors does this cover?
I wasn't here last week, so those are not my numbers, I'm not, I'm not sure on those numbers, I'm not sure who said that, but it wasn't me, I wasn't here last week.
Do you know how many inspectors, I mean, when we have all of these, how many people are going out, is it more than three people for the city? And we have five contractors for five districts, so I would assume that there'd be...
The number, the last number I got was, was up to 40 people that come out during different times, when we're in the midst of a snow event, with these contracting companies.
So if we didn't have them, we would need up to 40 city employees to be doing this work?
Yeah, what we're really talking about is a peak, and something that happens five or six or 10 times a year, and during that time, it's very intense, and you need, you need a peak to handle that intense load, and then it goes back to kind of a normal operating procedure, so these contractors coming in just during these times, help us handle that peak.
And would that save us money, then, so that we're not paying that many full-time people?
That has been my experience, without a doubt, it is a cost savings to the taxpayer to have those folks come in only when we need them, the rest of the time, we're not paying them, we're not keeping them busy.
And this particular contract, last week, we said it was for District One, which I assumed was Mr. Festerson's district, I was thinking city council districts, but this was, it's District One, Public Works District One, because you have five...
Correct.
Public Works districts for the city?
Which is the northeast district.
Northeast district, so that would actually, that would actually be District Two, and then part of downtown, District Three?
Correct.
Okay, and so, we've already passed four contracts for the rest of the city, so today, what we're passing is inspectors for North Omaha and North Downtown.
That is correct.
So, by, if we were to vote no, then there wouldn't be inspectors inspecting that area of our city, correct? Potentially?
The way these contracts are set up, that is correct.
Because we didn't contract with the others to cover that area of the city.
We have not.
And that could actually leave the citizens in Ms. Johnson's district, I think the majority of it's Ms. Johnson's district, where they may be getting contractors, but they don't have inspectors coming back to make sure that it's being done correctly, and could you please tell me what the inspectors do as well?
Well, the inspectors follow the routes, they're assigned routes, so they come in, and they're designated these areas to check, to determine whether or not the contractors been in there, they go over the sheets, and so, the billing sheets that the contractors provide, hey, we did this many streets, they go back and verify those, they do the bookwork on that, they submit that to the city, so that we can then get them invoiced and get those contractors paid, as you can imagine, it's important to them that they be paid in a timely fashion, as they're doing business as well, they help with all those things, and then they do a lot of call-outs, when we get call-outs from people, we call the contractors, the inspectors, excuse me, back, and they go out, and they're just our eyes and ears out in these neighborhoods, I mean, most of the folks with Public Works, in a big storm event, are working on the major streets, that's their function, is the orange trucks, those employees on the major routes, and these folks are the eyes and ears for us with these private contractors within the neighborhoods.
And then the inspectors call the contractors back, and...
Correct.
The contractors then wouldn't get paid if they didn't come back and complete the job.
That is correct, and that has happened, and I can work on that documentation, but we do have documentation that that has happened, they have a choice, hey, you missed 129th Street, you either need to get back out in the next two hours and plow it, or we're gonna take it off what you got paid for. Ultimately, it will get done, somebody's gonna do it eventually, but the contractor normally is the one that comes back out, they're usually still in the area, and they'll come back out and address that.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And I guess my comment is, I understand Councilman Palermo's point of, I wanna change the way maybe snow plowing is done, and I would like to use city employees as opposed to inspectors, my problem is, because I appreciate that, and I've had issues with Public Works and snow removal when it comes to assessing citizens who don't, and so what I did is I worked on an ordinance, and we passed an ordinance, kind of changing how we assess people and that kind of thing, my problem is changing snow operations on November 2nd, we've already passed the budget, we've, this was in the budget, we already passed it, and now saying that we're going to change snow operations, but actually only for one area of the city, being just basically Ms. Johnson's and a portion of Mr. Bagley's district, I think isn't fair, if we wanna change how the snow removal operations are, then I think that's something that we should start working on now for next year, I just don't think it's fair to the people in Ms. Johnson's district that they're gonna be inspected, so if the contractors aren't doing a good job, we're not gonna have any way to do that, and that does disadvantage certain people in our city over others, and I'd be making this argument if it was my district, or anybody else's district, right now, it happens to be Ms. Johnson's district, and I just don't think that that's fair to the people that live in her area, and I, and if we were gonna do this, then it should be all or nothing, we should have either voted no to all the inspectors, or yes to all the inspectors, and since we've already passed four, I just think that it would be inherently unfair to the people that live in the public maintenance District One, to do so, so, I guess where I'm at is, I'm not opposed to looking at changing how we do it, we just can't change it on November 2nd, when we could have snow next week, and so, that's where I'm at on this, and I think spending an average of $161,000, that amount of money only buys you 1.5 employees in Public Works roughly, with benefits, it may not even be .5, so, it would only cover one inspector, now, I have to say that I've had some issues with inspectors in this last year, so, I think this snow season, if I, when I get complaints, I'm now gonna be asking some different questions, so, I would like to know who the, when we go into our snowstorm, I know who my contractors are, because we get maps, but I think what I would like is a map of who the inspectors are, and I would like to have one main contact for the inspectors, so that when I do get complaints, I want the inspectors to be held accountable, and I wanna know where the inspectors are and where they've been, so, I'm just kinda giving forewarning to Public Works, that's kind of what I'm gonna be looking for this snow season, I'm really gonna be paying close attention, and not just blaming the contractors, but because we are paying these inspectors, I would like some accountability for the inspectors, too, so, and I understand, Mr. Fitzer, that you're doing that, but I think I would like to confirm that myself, with Public Works moving forward, I really want these inspectors to be on their toes, and that making sure they're doing their job, and that we're making sure they do their job as well, so, that's why I'm going to vote yes for this, because I want everybody to receive the same services throughout our city, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, Todd, just a couple quick questions.
Todd Fitzer, Public Works.
Thanks, just, just for the knowledge of all, let's take a step back for a second, and explain maybe why we have private contractors for the neighborhoods to begin with.
Okay, this is really a level of service issue, we have approximately 100 city works trucks, when we have a major event, we'll bring in folks from parks and sewers, and to really help us out, for a big blizzard like we had last February, for example, at that time, I believe we had 117 pieces of equipment on the ground, these contractors end up being another 100 trucks, so while we're out doing the majors, and we're trying to get the main streets and the secondaries cleared, the contractors are in trying to get the neighborhood streets cleared, so you can get from your driveway to one of the major streets, or the collector's streets, so you can get to work, or church, or any number of different places, if we didn't have the contractors, the way the operations work today, I believe we would still need to prioritize our major and collector's streets, that's where the speeds are higher, that's where the traffic volumes are higher, we would still need to do those streets first, in the example that I gave in pre-council of the blizzard that we had last February, in my opinion, it would've been four or five days before we would've had any significant Public Works trucks into the neighborhoods, maybe some of the major neighborhood collectors, but certainly some of the side streets, cul-de-sacs like that, would've been multiple days before we could've gotten our major streets cleared enough to be able to move into those areas, but with the contractors, they move in essentially at the same time, and we do have our foremans out doing inspections on the major streets, and we have these contracted inspectors doing inspections within the neighborhood streets, just like we're doing on the major streets, so that's, it's really a level of service thing, if you would vote against contractors and inspectors next year, the neighborhood streets would take significantly longer for us to get to and to get clear.
Sure, thank you, thanks for that explanation, and so, in my estimation, I'm not sure there's a absolute connection between the number of hot... between the, the number of hires or staffing shortages that may exist today and this particular function. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that statement, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Appreciate those answers. That's all. If you want to take a seat.
Thank you.
You know, it, it's interesting. I think it's, it's certainly standard and customary practice to hire, I, I'm, I'm calling this an owner's representation agreement, basically is really what it is. And, and really, I mean, you see it a lot in, in construction industry or construction projects on, on the street work and panel replacements. I'll take a quick aside there. And I know there, there have been some issues lately of maybe the inspectors didn't catch or what, we, we understood that maybe some of it didn't get caught. Some of the, the work that was performed wasn't to standards. But we also don't hear of, of the many cases where substandard work has been performed and our owner's representatives have caught that and been on the front guard for the, the city of Omaha. So I just want to make sure that, that we all understand what, what an owner's representative is, is hired to do or what they, what their position is. And I'll, I'll just list out a couple of them. So it, it's the likelihood of having the owners, or in this case, the city's project goals and objectives are fulfilled, that being that the streets cleared sufficiently and to standards. Ensure that the city's getting what it's paid for. It's a check and balance system to verify that projects are completed on time and on budget. Or in its place, if it, it needs to rectify any problems that result from inadequate work. They ensure that the municipal quality and standards are met. It keeps detail, this is another thing that's, that we talked about this morning. Keeps detailed records to verify job completion and the satisfactory work has been done. It watches for unsafe practices of contractors. Reviews, maintains and manages the contracted responsibilities. Helps to ensure that our tax dollars are, are used efficiently and it holds the contractors responsible for their work. And in some cases, it, it helps to have, build that, that paper trail or the case if, if there's any conflict resolutions that have to be satisfied at, at the end of the day. So what we're, what we're really doing is we're, we're kind of buying an insurance policy to make sure that that work is done properly. And, and it, it is standard and customary. And I, and I think it is an efficient use of taxpayers' dollars because in the long run, it saves us money and it ensures that the quality work is, is there. And to, to the point of whether or not any of the contractors have not been paid in full in the past, well, if they, if they got the call that they were, that they had more work to be done or they missed something and they, they went out and completed it, then they've completed the, the contract and, and therefore get paid. So I, I'm not sure if you use that as a barometer of how much, how much didn't get paid. They, they get paid for the work that they do. So, and I think what, what we've heard is that of the potential $300,000, if you look over the last five years, of the up to amount, that about half of that has been expended over each year for the past five years. So I think it is a good and efficient system. I think it's a, a good use of the taxpayers' dollars. And I'll, and that's the reason why I asked for this reconsideration.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This proposal only addresses the work not being done. It does not ensure that the work will be done at a level of service what, what will ensure equity. Therefore, I would recommend another solution to be determined that addresses the real point. Ms. Melton, concern addresses equity and citizens receiving some services. This doesn't address the level of service residents receive in District Two, once again. For example, blowing snow in driveways after the, after snow has been removed by a resident in the area and the snow is then plowed back into a driveway. So the solution to have a inspector come to ensure that snow is removed in an area, yes, that may have some validity. But at the end of the day, when a resident takes time to clean out their driveway, to get out their driveway, to get out so that they can travel, and then they turn around and then there is snow in their driveway, the end game that the contractor is to come in and help with the removal of snow really negates itself. It really isn't happening. Again, this solution addresses, doesn't address the real problem about snow removal, the system. How do we adequately remove snow, especially in areas where the infrastructure was built in the early 1800s? How do we address those areas in the removal of snow throughout the city of Omaha? Having a supervisor come to make sure that the work is done, that's a great thing. But if the real goal is to ensure that the citizens have access to get out of their homes, drive out of their driveway, to get to work in a timely fashion, I say in District Two, that's not happening. Residents in District Two are having to literally remove their own snow in these spaces because the contractors are not being considerate about the snow removal that they are blowing in the driveways in these areas. So we need to look at the system, look at finding a remedy that will fix the problem regarding the way things are removed, the way snow is removed. And I don't think that an inspector is, is the solution. We need to look at all alternatives. And that's just not the only alternative that we have, which is a, an inspector to come out and make sure that it's done. We have other means, other ways to do that. And that could be hiring other folks to do the work. At the end of the day, the snow needs to be removed. It needs to be removed in a timely fashion in District Two because we are looking for opportunities for job advancements. And if this is going to be in hindrance because snow is in our driveway and I have to call in an hour late because my snow was removed by me and then some contractor turned around and replaced that snow in my driveway and now I have to be delayed to remove the snow again, you're really not helping me get the snow out of the area so that I have a means to get to work on time. That's not, that's not addressing the, the problem. And we need to address the problem. So I will be supporting my colleague, Benny, on this.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. For the record, I voted to reconsider because I gave Councilmember Harding my word that I would do that so we could have the discussion today. So I, I'm going to vote against this because I want to be clear. This isn't voting against anybody inspecting snow removal from contractors in my district or Councilmember Johnson's district or anywhere else. I think, you know, the arguments made here, to simplify it for me, we have in our budget today, these AEO-1 positions with the city that are not filled. And Mr. Grauman, in the displays he made earlier, it shows some of the duties those AEO-1s perform. And I think the city, I think it was said, this has been going on for 10 years that they're using these contractors to do this work when a lot more of this should be done in-house and less outside. There's more accountability when it's done with city employees. And also the, the past concerns we had with the concrete work that was done in Councilmember Melton's district, that was alarming to all of us on this council and it should be to taxpayers, that when you have contractors doing work, I, I think the accountability is bad. And for transparency and cost efficiency, I really believe if the city has those positions, again, they are in the budget already. And there's, I think Director Stube said between 40 and 50 is the number that it still stands at today. If we have those positions filled, I, I think that that would help greatly. And what I would like to do is set this up to have the discussion, understanding it snowed seven inches in Grand Island, I think, here yesterday. That snow happens in November in Nebraska. My goal is, new to the council, is to push this forward and to really push to not have contractors doing work that can be done by the city. I understand you have to have supplemental contractors from time to time. I got no problem with that. But again, when this is in the budget to have these positions filled and they're not filled, then that's the concern that I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to talk about the hiring of subcontract labor. I've talked to our HR director and they have postings out there constantly looking for people to fill these positions. And I can tell you, they're just not getting the applications. So they have been talking about, and what they're doing right now is going through and looking at every classification, looking at what's it going to take to attract talent to become city workers. I can tell you from a business guy's standpoint, we don't, at the lumberyard, we hire truck drivers and we have a set rate that we pay for truck drivers. We're, it's an impossible situation right now to find a truck driver to haul lumber to a job site. And so when we have those peak positions or peak situations, we're hiring a subcontractor to come over, pick up a load of lumber and take it to Grand Island or take it to wherever. So it's not uncommon to, to use subcontract type labor. And I, and I have empathy for people in Public Works, for people in HR. It's a difficult situation out there. Some of these subcontractors are subcontractors because they don't want to be an employee. They don't want, they want to work for themselves. They want to take the risk. They want to hire and fire their own people, have their own equipment, and they're willing to bid on work for the city. And we need them in those peak times. So I'll be voting for it, which I think you all expected anyway. So thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Rowe, I didn't expect that, so I'm not sure with me. Folks, given the gentleman sleeping there, this, this is about a cost savings, regardless if it's $60,000, $160,000. It doesn't matter. It's a cost savings. And ultimately, I promise you, the people who are going to save you to get you out of your residential area is going to be a city employee. It's not going to be a contractor. I will guarantee it. It will be a city employee that saves you. By the time that complaint's made, by the time that contractor is off and gone, by the time the inspector has already turned in his time sheet to get paid, the city's going to come save you. And that's what we're supposed to do. That's what they're paid to do. Mr. Fitzher, are you still sitting back there?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works?
I, I believe it was last year, there were really great raises given. Do you, do you remember what part of street maintenance they were given to?
I do not.
Okay, I'll tell you. It was to management. It was to Foreman Ones, Foreman Twos, Foreman Threes. They got really good raises. So we expect a little more from them. So when we hear we're 40 to 60, and I'm going to say 60 because I know it's pressing 60, when we hear we're 60 people short and they got really good raises, we expect more out of them. And if we can save $160,000, then I expect them to be out inspecting the contractors who have already been approved. Again, listen, folks, your snow removal will not be impacted. The majors are going to be taken care of. The residuals are going to be taken care of. We're talking about inspectors. The trucks are still there. The plows are still there. The people are still there. They got GPS on the trucks. I could sit back in a room for 100 bucks an hour and watch a map with GPS on it to see if they've been down the residential road. Mr. Fitzher, does every single contractor that the city hire for residential roads have GPS on their truck?
Yes.
Thank you. We gave raises to employees. It's the same employees I'm saying we could use another one of. And not just in the winter, in the summer as well. We have less people in this city working in street maintenance today than we did 10 years ago. And think about the lane miles we've gained. Do you think it's time to save some money and actually put that money where it deserves to go? I do. This whole entire snow operation plan needs to be relooked at. And, and things need to be cut out of it. And it starts with inspectors that aren't needed. The contractors are there. We're not getting away from it. I can't help that we're voting on this today and winter's around the corner. It was presented three weeks ago. If these inspectors are that important, then maybe it should have been presented in the spring and we could have hashed this out then. But it wasn't. It was presented to us now. And I would have had the same approach as I did last year, as I did this year, that this step is not needed. Folks, your snow is going to be taken care of. We're cutting out the inspector. Again, so let me give you a situation if I could, Mr. Fitzher. Two inches of snow flying on the ground or already on the ground. Snow's still coming down. The inspect, the, the, the snowplow contractors in residential areas, when do the inspectors get launched to inspect?
Two hours after the contractors go in.
So two hours after. How long does it take an inspector to catch up to the contractor's work on normal operation?
I don't have any idea. It would vary. It would depend on a lot of conditions.
See the problem I have? I, I just, I, I see circumstances that you're just not going to be able to tell if they were there. And a car's going to be moved and people are going to push their driveways into the street, unfortunately, and then they get pushed back. At the end of the day, I promise you, the city workers that we have in place, even though we're 60 short, are going to come save you. They're going to get you to work. They're going to get you to school. They're going to get you to church. And whether we saved $1 or $160,000, we need to hire more people. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. This is our motion. Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Begley?
No.
Harding?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
No.
Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Items seven and eight can be considered together for Baker Square, located southwest of 132nd and Center Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven and ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat.
Public hearing and vote on numbers nine and 10 are today. Proponents, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Douglas Dreeson, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Hopefully, this one's a little less controversial than the last one. But I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Begley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Items seven and eight are approved, seven to zero. Items nine and 10 can be considered together for Miracle Hill Shopping Center, located northwest of 114th Street and West Dodge Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI III overlay district. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat.
Public hearing and vote on numbers nine and 10 are today. Proponents, please.
My name's Jason Peralt with Olson, here on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions yesterday.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none. Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I didn't catch your name from Olson. I... Could you stand up?
Jason Peralt.
Jason. So the last time we had this in, kind of in front of us, I had asked that somebody from the developer's office at least come down and... from the developer's office at least come down and at least share with us what you're doing. I mean, what we have attached is just kind of some drawings. But if you could, could you at least give us a little more information on what you're changing, what you're putting in? I know there's some construction work going on on the retail center. But I mean, it's an, I'm really glad somebody's doing something there because it's a huge eyesore. It's awful. We've had the Boston Market. I don't know if that building was condemned or what. I mean, it was kind of boarded up, but what are you planning to do with this area?
So the initial, what's on here is they're going to split a couple lots off of the, there's, I think, four existing lots. They're going to add two out parcel lots to the, along one hundred and fourteenth Street. Some right of ways being dedicated for.
So I'm sorry, I'm having trouble understanding you.
Just pull the microphone down maybe a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, currently, there's four lots there. And what's on this is we're splitting off two lots along the frontage of one hundred and fourteenth for additional buildings. The rest of the shopping center is basically being, they're kind of giving it a facelift to repurpose and hopefully attract new tenants to that area.
Okay, so what's happening with the building where the old Boston Market used to be?
That building is staying. And I believe that they'll be trying to, when they find a suitable tenant, to improve the facade and outfit that building appropriately.
Okay, so there's nothing big and new. You're just kind of putting a facelift on that old bill, on the old building?
Yeah, there's, aside from the two additional lots, the one to the north, I think it's lot four, is.
Where the fresh marker, that used to be a grocery store, then it was that pop-up market?
Yeah, well, that's lot, that'll be, I think it's lot two. That one's being repurposed. I'm not sure if I can say who's going in there right now.
Okay, if you're not able, but you've got, at least got a tenant that's going in there?
Yep.
Okay. So that's, we can just expect you're just doing work and then hoping to get additional tenants? Because I mean, over half the building is empty at this point.
Right.
All right. Anything else you want to add about it or?
No, I think.
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nine and ten are approved, seven to zero. Items eleven through fourteen can be considered together for Serenity Estates, located northwest of Skyline Drive and Old Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items eleven and twelve, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R4 District. Item thirteen, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item fourteen, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items number eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Streason.
Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have. This is a little residential subdivision out on the west side of Skyline Drive. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items fifteen through twenty can be considered together for Shadow Glen North, located southeast of one hundred and sixty eighth Street and Bedford Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items fifteen through seventeen, ordinances to rezone this property from DR District to DR District, R4 District and R6 District. Items eighteen and nineteen, resolutions to approve the revised preliminary plat and final plat. Item twenty, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items number fifteen through twenty are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Mark Johnson, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Lane Building Corporation. With me today is Jeff Lamontaine from E&amp;A Consulting Group, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items twenty-one through twenty-six can be considered together for Kiwett Subdivision Replat One, located southeast of Twenty-seventh and Eleven North Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twenty-one, an ordinance to rezone this property from R7 District and GC District to TOD2MX District. Item twenty-two, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district in the TOD2MX District. Items twenty-three and twenty-four, ordinances to repeal the ACI I and PK overlay districts. Item twenty-five, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item twenty-six, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote is today on items number twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Proponents, please. Mr. McCly.
Tom McCly, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham Street, Omaha, Suite 201. I'm here on behalf of Twenty-seven Eleven Worth LLC, the property owner and developer on this project. I'm here to answer any questions. I'd also note, this is an affordable housing tax credit project that we're doing one hundred and thirty-four units under the four percent Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program, which is very rarely used here locally. We're excited about this opportunity to bring some more affordable housing to Omaha. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the room today? I believe we have a proponent by Zoom, Mr. Luce. I don't know if he tends to speak or is here to answer questions as well. I will recognize you here in a second. There you go.
Here in support of the applicant, 10836 Old Mill Road, PD2 Engineering. Answer any questions if they arise.
Great, thank you. We'll move to any opponents then. Anyone in opposition?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two. I used to drive up and down Eleven Worth a lot. And I'm kind of wondering, with this development overlay for orbit, I guess, I guess we have to tear down some buildings and put up some things to draw new people to ride the buses. But we've been doing that already and I drive up Dodge Street a lot. I don't see very many people on those buses or waiting for them or getting off of them and during rush hour. So I don't know why we want to keep building apartment buildings or whatever they're going to do here to attract more people to ride the bus because they just don't want to do it. It doesn't say that there's any TIF available for being applied on this, but it's already approved. If you read number twenty-six or the last item, it's already approved. So why are we having a hearing? Because you're going to do what you're going to do. I can't change your mind on it. I can ask you to delay it so that more citizens can get in on this. But yeah, we need affordable housing. Are the apartment buildings that'll probably go in there, are those going to be affordable? And affordable for who? What's the criteria? There's just not enough debate, debate between you people and the developers, but there's no two-way debate with the citizens. And that has to change. I think the Open Meetings Act implies that there should be two-way debate because it's intended for the citizens. It's not intended for you to make rules that are maybe unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Couple of questions, Tom, if you would. You indicated these, there's one hundred and thirty-four units and these will be low-income housing units?
Yeah, Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program, yes.
Okay, can you, I had some talks with staff about the low-income housing tax credits. Can you talk about that just briefly?
Sure, so.
And Tom, just your name and address again for the record.
Sorry, I thought you were going to tell me to be brief.
I'll be okay too.
Tom McCly, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'll try to be brief and I'm sure it might go chalk with my first sentence. The Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program was adopted in nineteen eighty-six. Actually, Ronald Reagan signed it into law. It was a recognition on the inability of us to provide affordable housing nationwide. The public housing programs started in the thirties. Many of them had a lot of struggles. So it was a public-private partnership that was thought would be a better vehicle to create some housing in an affordable nature. So that's what occurred. I think we're over three million affordable housing units constructed across the United States at this point. I would argue it's the most successful public-private partnership program in the history of the United States of that quantity. The federal government grants tax credits to the state in Nebraska. Each state housing authority, in our case, it's the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, are granted tax credits. There's two different programs. There's a nine percent program and there's a four percent program. The nine percent program is limited by the quantity that you can, that are given to each house, to each state. It's based on population. Nebraska gets very few because we don't have a whole ton of population. They do not go very far. I would contend that Omaha gets maybe eighty units to a hundred units a year out of that program. That's it. That's the entire nine percent program. The four percent program is a different program. It's used to create taxes and bonds to create the four percent program. We have done two different deals, I'm sorry, three different deals in Omaha in the last five years that have used the four percent program. Those are the only deals that have used the four percent program, with the exception of Highlander did as well. I should step back. There are a few others that are now looking at trying to do this. So the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program, the federal government gives you a tax credit in, for the developer's agreement that for at least fifteen years, we will limit the amount of rents called fair market rents. HUD prescribes it every year for each metro area across the country. We're limited to how much rent we can charge. In addition, we're limited to whom we can rent to. In this case, for this program, it'd be sixty percent of area median income and below. People have to establish that their income is at that level. So it is working, you know, they're paying rent. Folks are paying fair market rent. This isn't a giveaway. This isn't, you know, they're just living for free. A lot of people more often than not are now calling it a workforce housing tax credit program, which might be a better nomenclature for the program in actuality. So they are paying fair market rents, but they can't have income that's superseding those fair market rents. And that's a calculus that HUD does. It's actually based on the idea that thirty percent of your income shouldn't be going to more than, to housing, which in Omaha now and all across the country, we're superseding that by almost, almost double in some cases where people are paying fifty or sixty percent of their income just for rent, which is of course causing problems. That's the program that we're using for that Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program, for the financing of it. And then that's how we will then manage. NIFA audits this every year. So under NIFA, they have an audit program. They, we have to submit all of the tenant files. We have to see how much rent we're charging them. That they're qualified, meaning the proof of income is there as well. So there is a state auditing of this process that has been around for decades now and is pretty well established. The tax credit itself, we don't necessarily use the tax credit. I wouldn't have that many tax credit, I don't have that many taxes that I'd have to pay. So we syndicate them, is the phrase that's utilized. So national banks, national insurance companies, and local banks buy the tax credits or syndicate. They invest into the project and the return, they get the tax credit themselves. This has been a great vehicle, in my opinion, for bringing in money from the last few deals we've done with Texas investors, New York investors, Chicago investors. So it's a great vehicle to create this tax credit and get outside money investing in the city of Omaha, which then in turn is going to create jobs for carpenters, electricians, property managers. All of that money coming in is, I think, valuable to the city economy. Sorry, that was a little long.
I appreciate your brief answer. No, I, this. I, this is obviously downtown of my district, so I appreciate, and learning on this job of the projects going on, this is a good one in my district and I appreciate the work that you've done here and look forward to working with you in the future. And I'll make a motion to support this.
One quick comment, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
Brief one?
These are, this will be brief. These are incredibly hard to put together. We've actually owned this property for over five years as we've been trying to put this deal together. So it's been a labor that, so appreciate this opportunity to get it to over the finish line here shortly.
Thanks. Thank you. I'll just add one thing before I call for the vote, and that is that Mr. McCly is obviously very knowledgeable on this topic. And as city council members know, we will soon be having a legislative summit with the city of Lincoln, the Lincoln City Council, which we do every couple of years and intend to host that at one of his properties. And part of that intention is not only to highlight that part of town, but also to have a discussion about affordable housing and these financing mechanisms that do sound complex and can be complex, but are critically important to addressing that issue. And we'll give Mr. McCly a brief period of time to describe them before that group too.
It's a rabbit hole of complexity. I've been doing it for almost twenty years now and I still learn things every day. It just, it just never seems to end. We can get in the state housing tax credit program too. Save that.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item twenty-seven, an ordinance to rezone property located southeast of Thirtieth and Burdette Streets from R7 District to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name's Terry Morrison at three five five two Farnham Street. I'm here on behalf of the owner. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Morrison, if you would, just curious, where's the owner?
The owner is Seventy-five North and the redevelopment company is Bryn Shore. This is being done as part of the Highlander Phase Four redevelopment on Thirtieth Street.
Right, so we're, you're talking about Sidney Franklin?
Correct.
All right, just wanted to comment that that section, Phase Four, will definitely be a complement to what's already there over to, across the street. And I just wanted to say that that is really an exciting space. I'm really excited about the area that is currently in motion where we have Big Mamas. And then now they are, look like they are trying to entertain a space like jazz on the green in that area over there. So I'm looking forward to this new development and the possibilities of it bringing more excitement, more opportunity for District Two and overall the city of Omaha. I'll be going ahead and voting for this in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that a motion?
I move to accept, I move, I motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-eight, an ordinance to rezone property located nine zero six and nine one zero North Sixteenth Street from DS District to CBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, Victor Ramirez, six one nine South Twenty Street. I'm just here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second, roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-nine, an ordinance to rezone property located at fourteen oh two Jones Street from DS District to CBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval via a request from the applicant to withdraw the item.
There's been a request to withdraw? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items thirty and thirty-one can be considered together for property located at eight nine one zero and eight nine two zero Ford Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item thirty, an ordinance to rezone property from CC District and GC District to CC District. Item thirty-one, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote today on numbers thirty and thirty-one is today. Proponents, please.
Dan Rudolph, the applicant, thirty-two oh one Dorado Court, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 32 and 33 can be considered together for property located at 2014 and 2016 Pierce Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 32, inordinate to rezone this property from GI District to R5 District. Item 33, inordinate to approve a PUR overlay district in an R5 district.
Public hearing and vote on numbers 32 and 33 are today. The applicant, please.
Hi, I'm Grace Longley. I'm the owner at this property. Just happy to introduce myself and thank you for your support. It's a nine-townhouse, small little structure that we're hoping to put together with your approval. Thank you very much. We had the support of the Land Bank to get the one property a couple of, just over two years ago now, and look forward to working with them. We have a good team. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grace. And your address, just for the record?
Sorry. Home address, 1325 Linwood Lane, Omaha 68152.
Thanks. Any other proponents today?
Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant and the architect today to answer any technical questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents on 32 and 33? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 34 and 35 can be considered together for property located southeast of 27th and Cummings Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 34, inordinate to rezone this property from GO District and GI District to DS District. Item 35, inordinate to mend the boundaries of the ACI-1 overlay district.
Public hearing and vote on items number 34 and 35 is today. Proponents, please.
Brian Halsey with RDG Planning and Design, 1302 Howard Street, on behalf of the applicant, Creighton University.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 36, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow restaurant drive-in in the GI District located at 4416 Dodge Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 36 is today. Proponents, please.
Victor Ramirez, 619 South 20th Street. I'm here representing the applicant for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 36 is approved, seven to zero. Item 37, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow construction sales and service in the CC District located northwest of Rose Blumpkin Drive and Harney Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 37 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Eric Williams with Olson, 2111 North 67th Street, here on behalf of the client. Available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 37 is approved, seven to zero. Item 38, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow small group living in the R435 District located at 2118 Grand Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 38 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, I'm Cartel Sural, owner of 2118 Grand Avenue. This is my associate Dante West, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. And Dante, your address for the record?
My address is 1020 North Worgen Street.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Oh, sorry. Larry, you're an opponent? Come on down.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm not totally opposed to this, but I think in the overall city's master plan, I'd like to know if I can expect a small group living, non-disabled or disabled, in my neighborhood on Lafayette. There's already some rental properties there. Too many cars for, can't park on 50th Street anymore. Used to be able to drive all the way through on 50th, but too many people in those apartments. I mean, they're now apartments. They used to be single-family. Is this the overall master plan for the city to do this? I know we need some group homes. I suppose they are. I'm not totally opposed to that, as long as it is well-run. Thank you.
Any other opponents today on number 38? We'll close the public hearing. Motion and second. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 38 is approved, seven to zero. Item 39, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in the CC District located at 20343 Blando Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 39 is today. Proponents, please.
Ken Ducat, 7370 South 225th Street, Gretna, Nebraska 68028. I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, is your light on, or is that?
Yes.
You're recognized.
Um, that was by mistake.
Okay. Previous item. Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 39 is approved, seven to zero. Item 40, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow recreational club in the R1 District, a large lot located at 5020 Grand Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 40 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, council members, good afternoon. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. With me is Ashley Kuhn, Blair Freeman, 4616 Dodge Street. This is a cleanup item from the item that you approved unanimously two weeks ago. This was part of the original application. Last-minute decision that it needed its own special use permit due to scheduling and noticing requirements. It's having its own hearing today instead of being heard two weeks ago. With everything else, project remains the same. Appreciate your support. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Diane Watson Hodges, 5208 Laramore Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm opposing this ordinance because I believe that our children need more community sitters in the community. We have the Omaha Home for Boys on 52nd and Ames, and then there's also North Star right off of 50th and Ames. I've been to several of their functions that they have in the community, and I'm sad to say that they don't have many people working there that look like me. And I do believe the children need to see that. When speaking with some of the organizations, the neighborhood organizations in the community, I found out that our area is listed as substandard, slightly blighted area, and there's a lot of block grants that can be approved in our areas. And I just wanted you all to know that we need something. I understand the youth need assistance and help, but so do the senior citizens. We need to feel comfortable in our homes, living in a safe environment. We need mental health services as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I want to comment on the justice part of this project. As you know, there's a detention center, youth detention center being built just across the street, and as I understand it, this, the purpose for this project is to keep youth out of that detention center. There's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of interested parties that want to help the troubled youth in this community. So, not only do we need buildings, but we also need programs, effective way of leading the kids into, to the right path. I think that one way that you can do that, aside from the programs and the centers that are set up so that you don't have too many kids in the detention center, is to work closely to the, with the county government on their, with their Child and Youth Services Committee and with the commissioners, as well with the, well, with the detention center that is going to be, that will be housing the troubled youth. So, I, I come here as an opponent just so that I can give you guys that observation, that I think you, as public officials, need to work more with the county so that you have a cohesive effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I am opposed to this primarily because I think the city and the county already own a lot of property out around 42nd and Center. Why do we need to sneak into this neighborhood now? I drove around that neighborhood last week. A lot of nice residential homes there. I think they'd prefer to have the church in operation, wouldn't you? But now we have to sneak in there. And the reason I say sneak is I'll bet it's not very long before you tear down the church because you're already thinking of moving west. Oh, not two or three blocks further, there's another church. And you can have all of this stuff redeveloped along Maple Street, all this part of the master plan also. We have all kinds of programs for these kids all over town. And we used to have a juvenile justice center where they could get all these programs. We were going to have a new one, but no, the judges needed some help, so we scratched that program. Now, we're going to go take buildings down in various parts of the city to have programs for these kids. Out of 42nd and Center, we could have football teams. We could have all kinds of kids out there, basketball teams. Yes, we need to build some buildings out there, but why not do that instead of tearing down some buildings to put up some new ones? Let some other people develop those properties and not at my expense with tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, I would just like to thank everyone that came up to the mic to do their civic duties. I just want to let you know that I've taken all of your thoughts and your concerns at heart, and I truly believe that Blair and Freeman will be an asset, and they will also take your considerations as a neighborhood in their plan in executing what is very much needed for our children in the future. Therefore, I'm going to go ahead and move our motion that this is approved.
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. And I just wanted to clarify that we already passed the project last week, so today we are only voting on the recreational club. And I just thought it would be important to recognize, we're not revoting on the whole project. So, even if we voted no today, the whole project would go up. They just would, the kids just wouldn't have a gym to basically, you know, work out in and have the fun activities. We would be limiting it just to the residential inpatient, outpatient. All of that would still be built. We are here today just on the recreational club. So, we couldn't, we can't stop the project at this point anyway. And I want to clarify, there's no taxpayer dollars. There's no money coming out of the city budget to pay for this. There may be some federal grants. There may be some tax dollars coming into this from a grant, but not out of our city budget. There is no tax dollars supporting that. Just because it's on our agenda doesn't mean we're paying for it, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 40 is approved, seven to zero. Item 41, to consider a class C liquor license application for a mouth of the south located at 1111 Harney Street.
Public hearing and vote were continued today on number 41. Proponents, please.
Ryan Erntz, 3422 Forest Lawn.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks.
President Ryan, a couple of quick questions. If I want to steal a page from Councilman Palermo's book, and tell me what the mouth of the south, what do you serve there, and why should people come down there to your new establishment?
It's southern food, Louisiana style.
And you've been around Omaha in the past at other locations?
Yes, sir.
And you wanted to move in the best district in Omaha for your next venture, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Welcome aboard. Thanks. Best of luck to you, Ryan.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion approved.
Second. I didn't know this was going in the district.
Whoa.
Just kidding. Ryan, I just wanted to engage you to, since we did delay this last week, and I appreciate my colleagues doing that, so we can have consideration of the property we talked about in Florence. And within hours of our meeting, that property was cleared, which I appreciated, although come to figure out, I thought it was your quick hand you worked, but I think it was the city actually doing that at the time.
Yeah, I'm not aware if it was them or the current owner, so.
Okay. I believe it was the city. And so, that will be an additional assessment on that property that I hope either you or the new owner understands is responsible for and settles that with the city. And I think there are some past assessments on it, too. So, I hope those get taken care of. And if they don't, they will get taken care of through the board of equalization, I'll tell you that. But having said that, I understand there is a new owner, and that's been verified. I think it's RNA builders?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And you don't have to ask this question if you don't know, but do you know your intention with the property, or?
The only thing that they mentioned to me was actually building something onto it. I'm not sure what.
Okay, great. It would be good to see a productive reuse of that property there in Florence, and so I do appreciate that that occurred. And I will, I'll keep it aside, congratulate you on the new site. I can vouch for it being a great restaurant. It is, and we'll miss you not having you in Florence, but I know you'll do well at your new site.
Thank you.
You bet. Ms. Johnson, did you have your light on?
Nope.
You good? Okay. Thank you. There was a motion and a second. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 41 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 42 through 48 were held on October 26th. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items number 49 through 66 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed. There's a motion a second to approve. I just wanted to engage Mr. Kalsovich there on number 65 if I could for a second. Just so folks know, this is a contract that will help fix several of the retaining rules along the Keystone Trail that have been a problem, namely around 72nd and Pacific Street. I believe there's three locations, is that right?
Yes, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. You are correct, Councilmember. Mr. President, that's part of the comprehensive approach and plan we have to work on the expansion improvements of the entire Keystone Trail. So happy to be addressing those that have been, these areas that have been a problem in particular, and stabilize those.
That's appreciated. I think there's been some washout situations there that have caused pedestrians and bikers some issues, so I know that that'll be welcome. Would that work occur yet this year, or not until spring?
We had original intention of trying to address some of those things, but we're at a point now, just having done what we have to prepare, that they'll probably linger on into next year. But again, some work that will happen in significance along that entire stretch.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
There's been a motion a second on these items. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President. Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 67, an ordinance to acquire private property for the North 65th Avenue Fowler to Ames Avenue project.
Public hearing on number 67 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 68, an ordinance to acquire private property for the Persian sanitary pump station replacement project.
Public hearing on number 68 is today. Any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 69, an ordinance to approve the 508 and 1904 Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 69 is today. Proponents, please. I believe he's, I believe he's walking in the door. Mr. Seaton, are you here for number 69? Good timing.
I'm just Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Just here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 69? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 70, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Kelsey Murphy in the amount of $57,600 and authorized funding from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2020 Saki Grant.
Public hearing on number 70 is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Councilmembers. Deputy Chief Anna Cologne, Omaha Police, 505 South 15th Street, available for any questionings.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 71 and 72, ordinances to approve agreements with Boys and Girls Clubs of the Midlands in the amount of $50,000 and authorized funding from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2019 and 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grants.
Public hearings on number 71 and 72 are today. Proponents, please.
Deputy Chief Anna Cologne, Omaha Police, 505 South 15th Street, available for questionings.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed. Or, I'm sorry, I'll call for opponents on 71 and 72.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I'm maybe not totally opposed, but I just have to ask why we need gang specialists? After all of these years with Boys and Girls Club and all these other things we have set up with somewhat taxpayer funding, why aren't these programs successful enough that we have to have gang specialists present? Omaha Police people present? Boys and Girls Club goes back a long ways. Alternative schools go back a long ways. But we keep getting people coming down here with best practices from around the nation, asking for money for this program and that program. But maybe they're not working well enough. Maybe those people should be, put on the backseat and listen to local people. Are there not local people that are mental health experts, that are crime prevention experts to help solve these problems? Where are they? I do not hear them, I do not see them. Maybe necessary, but obviously, if there's that many gangs still around Omaha, then our programs aren't working. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to 71 and 72? Public hearing is closed. Deputy Chief, would you like to address that?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to make it known for the record that the individuals who are serving as our gang specialists, they are local people. These are individuals who are once in the gangs, these are individuals are from a particular culture. We have an individual who is of the Sudanese culture, who can relate better than any of us in this room to a fellow Sudanese. So we are not bringing outsiders into this community to address the issues of gang members. These are individuals that are, have more street creds than probably just about any of us in this room. So that is why we need gang specialists. Thank you.
Agreed, thank you, thanks for clarifying that. Public hearing is closed.
Item 73, an ordinance to accept an authorized disbursement from the JAG program in the amount of $409,839 for law enforcement programs.
Public hearing on number 73 is today. Proponents, please.
Amber Parker, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street, here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 74, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the University of Nebraska to allow university police officers to enforce Omaha City ordinances.
Public hearing on number 74 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 75, an ordinance to approve a redevelopment agreement for the redevelopment of various properties within the Millwork District.
Public hearing on number 75 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Smith.
Paul Smith, head of Millwork District 1, 1536 Cummings Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here to answer any questions, but I'm also here to offer a few comments that I think can be helpful. In 2018, the City Council and city entered into a memorandum of understanding which preceded and laid the groundwork for the city's undertakings for Millwork District. Since that time, we've been able to work hand-in-hand with the city in a public-private partnership where the city restored infrastructure so that we could redevelop an area that was vacant and underused. That area today is, has received over $100 million of commitments, privately funded commitments. As well, it's become a thriving district. We're not, we're nowhere close to done. We continue to have years and years of continued investment in front of us. But I wanted to thank the city because this work could not have been done, this would not have happened but for the partnership we have with the city.
Thank you. Thanks for that update. I know council members have toured the area recently, and the progress is really impressive. Other proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Kevin Anderson, City of Omaha Mayor's Office, here to echo Paul's statements and to make myself available for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I wanted to thank Paul for the tour that President Fesserson and I got either two or three weeks ago, I can't keep track of time anymore. But you and Emiliano, if I got your name said correctly, and your wife was there, and I'll tell you, in my endeavors, in my position in OPPD, I get around 13 counties, and that is a hidden gem. I'm so glad I got to take that tour and go through the building, I think, I want to get this wrong, 46,000 square feet, three buildings together. And it really is impressive to see that, I know it's in Councilmember Johnson's district, but man, that really was eye-opening to just experience that tour. And I got no doubt in my mind that in the future, that thing, the investments you're making in the, is my favorite part of talking to you, you grew up in my neighborhood there in Girford Park, Bemis Park, so you were a GFL All-Star, right? Is that what it was? That's an inside joke. Paul was an All-Star football player coming out of the old neighborhood. So I appreciated the stories and the tour that you gave us, and look forward to that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Smith, I've had an opportunity to go and visit the site, and it's just very refreshing. Opportunities are endless. I like the idea of the schools, Metro, UNO, and et cetera. Just want to commend on all the sentiments that have already been stated. Really appreciate your vision to bring this into District 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the lights. Next item. Oh, sorry, Ms. Melton?
Sorry, just wanted to, second, I think we've all toured it, it was great. Thank you for having all the council members down. And I just have to say, just the history in the building was amazing, and I'd never seen fire doors, those real old fire doors, and what one actually looked like. So I just wanted to say, thank you. Amazing building, that I really enjoy, and thank you for redeveloping that area. And it's a great example of a good public-private partnership, and why we do those, and how it affects our city. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me add on as well, like everyone said, we have this downtown ballpark, and always to the north side of it, we kind of had that, let's put up the big curtain and hide what's over there in the years past. But that's now changed. So I appreciate the work and the effort that's gone on, especially the outreach, reaching out to us, keeping us involved. We appreciate it, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I did notice on our tour that the Crowe Strain location caught Councilmember Bagley's eyes, so. It's looking good. No further lights, next item.
Item 95, a resolution to approve and accept the Fiscal Year 2021 State Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $456,726.
Public hearing and vote on number 95 is today. Proponents, please.
Amber Parker, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street, here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Amber, if you could come to the microphone for one minute? Name and address again.
Amber Parker, 1819 Farnham Street.
Thanks. We talked earlier, it's pretty unusual that we have supplemental agenda items, and we prefer that we don't have them. But in this case, the reason why this is on supplemental is because of an impending deadline that's like tomorrow, right?
Yes, it is literally tomorrow.
Okay. So that's why we are considering this on supplemental, but otherwise, we'd encourage that to be on regular agenda.
Yes, it was received Thursday last week, so we could only get it on today.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President. Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 76 through 93 do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President. Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:43.